All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here for the September 26th, 22nd Planning Commission meeting. And I guess we should start by doing a call to order. To take roll call.
Yes, Marlon, you want to do roll call?
Sure, committee member Wright.
Here.
Committee member Dustin.
Here.
Committee member Chang.
Here.
Alternate committee member Okazaki.
Yeah.
And Chair Boyle.
Here.
Vice Chair Brody has an excused absence.
Okay, thank you. And since we are not all present together and we are not near a flag, I will forego the flag salute for this evening. To, I just want to recognize that all commissioners were given the packet and agenda. It's 72 hours in advance, as well as the agenda was posted at the San Marino City Hall, the San Marino Public Library, the San Marino Rec Department, as well as the San Marino website. Each commissioner has received the plans and staff comments and has reviewed every item on the agenda and visited each site. The general order for the hearing will be as follows. We will ask the staff to discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal. The hearing will then be open to the public and I'll ask for comments for, against, or about the project. We will take comments from in-person participants. Well, I guess in this case, we'll take comments from participants in Zoom. In the case, in all cases, please state your name and your address. When speaking on an item, please do not repeat comments previously made, but rather acknowledge agreement with previous speakers. However, please present any additional comments. I also would like to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or under. At the conclusion of the public comments, the applicant will have a chance to respond. And no further comments from the public will be accepted. I will then ask for comments from each of the commissioners. After discussing it, after each commissioner is given a turn to speak on it, I will then have, if it warrants, we will have an internal discussion amongst the commissioners. Most of the cases will involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review. The commission will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variance will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has the option of continuing the applications to a future meeting. In the event of a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard the comments during the public comment period and during deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes remain to the project subsequent to the approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation, or $2,500, and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission. It is also important to understand that there is a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, it will take them out of order if there's a large number of people here for one item. That is not the case tonight. That item might be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. The commission will not start a new item after 11:00 PM. And items not heard will be carried over to an adjourned meeting or to the next regularly scheduled meeting. At this time, I would like to see if there are any public comments that are not in regards to anything on our current agenda.
Chair, there are no requests for comments at this moment.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess we'll move to agenda item number one. Staff, can we have the report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Item number one is design review case number DRC 21-28 HP for the property located at 2460 Cumberland Road. The applicant is requesting to construct a one-story Spanish colonial residence and a detached two-car garage. The applicant submitted a historic assessment report and which concluded that the property is ineligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places and California Register and also the destination as a local historic landmark. Staff has included the historic assessment report as part of the staff report. And as for the design review finding, staff finds that the single-story massing and scale is appropriate for the immediate neighborhood and compatible with adjacent structure. There are some minor design features that staff finds to be excessive, such as the chimney cap and also the numbers of downspouts and leader heads on the single-story building. Outside of that, staff is recommending condition of approval noted in one of the attachment for your consideration. Besides that, staff is able to make the required findings for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for the staff? I'm seeing none. Is the applicant or applicant's representative here to comment on the proposal?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Arthur Fong. I'd like to take a moment to thank. And I know my clients, Rick and Scott, their last turn up back here didn't turn out quite the way that hoped. You know, so when they approached me with the opportunity to redesign the house, she had a clear vision of what the house should be in terms of look and feel. I think specifically the house should look authentic and pure and correct and feel like it's been a neighborhood for decades. You know, with that in mind, we set out to find a solution that, you know, number one, is sensitive to our neighbors and number two, balances the need to preserve our neighbors' privacy at their use and term of their house, you know, with the functional and programmatic requirements of the house we're designing. I think to that, and I believe we achieved what we first set out to do. And when completed, I hope this house will be a welcome addition to our neighborhood. But before I conclude my remarks, I'd like to give a brief summary of some of the design elements we've employed. As Eva briefly stated, you know, the previous design, the previous application was a two-story house and they maximized the allowable living area and lot coverage. We reduced the mass greatly, you know, obviously it's a single-story house now. But in terms of the block coverage and additional living area, if you look at the residential plan information sheet, we're really only adding on an extra 550 square feet to the living area of the existing house and increasing the lot coverage by 441 square feet. And, you know, we took great pains to, to take inspiration from the Spanish colonial houses in the neighborhood and to kind of recreate the detailing that you find in those homes. Specifically, I think, you know, the, the most important is that we're on a, we're employing a raised foundation instead of a slab-on-grade foundation. You know, I think that allows us to really replicate the structural integrity of older homes in the area that were built, you know, built on raised foundation. And also, you know, some of the exterior detailing, you know, we have custom profile rafter tails and we're using a three-by rafter tail instead of, you know, a more common four-by or two-by contemporary rafter tail. We have really deep-set windows with full-nosed edges that also mimic the look and feel of, of historic homes in the area. And, you know, just broadly speaking, I think, I think, you know, we just set out to design a house that, you know, looks perfectly at home, perfectly situated on the site. And I hope that, you know, without due respect, that all the planning commissioners agree as well. I said, thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a few.
Commissioner Dustin.
Thank you. Let's see. I noticed on the plan information sheet, on sheet one of the plans, it indicates the proposed height for the building is 20 feet. But in the plan elevations, it's noted at 1811. So I'm assuming, is it the plan information sheet that's incorrect?
Let me refer to the drawings just a second. Yes, that's correct. The, the elevations have the correct building height. So I'll correct that on the plan information sheet.
Thank you. And then on the plans, it's indicated where the exterior light fixtures are proposed to be located. And in your materials section of the plans, you note two different models of light fixtures. But the plans don't specify which model of fixture is going in which location. Can you clarify that for me? There's.
Yes, so. So the fixture with the arm, you know, the single arm.
Yes.
We have the lantern, that's going to be on the front door, right above the front door.
Okay.
Above the garage door. And all the other fixtures will be the second fixture, the smaller one.
Thank you. And then further on the lights, in the materials section of your plans, you have photographs of the two different light fixtures, both of which are depicted as multi-bulb fixtures. But the model numbers that you gave, if I looked up those model numbers on the manufacturer's website, one of those fixtures has three bulbs and one has a single bulb. So I just want to clarify, are you going by the model number so that the, the larger fixture with the arm is a multi-three-bulb fixture and all the other fixtures will be single bulb? Is that correct?
I'll have to double-check with that and coordinate with staff. I believe the, the second fixture comes in different sizes. So maybe is the smallest size would be the single bulb and the larger size would be the multi-bulb. But we, we want to use a larger-sized fixture. So if that's the multi-bulb, then that would be the correct one, but I'll have to double-check.
All right, thank you. And then the copper leader heads that you're proposing, are those going to be a natural finish that will weather? Or are they going to be coated to remain glossy?
Which ones, which, which way would you guys prefer?
Always natural.
Okay, so the patina over time?
Correct.
Okay, I can note that.
And then if I'm looking at these plans, what is depicted here is that all the down drains from the gutters are going to be internal to the exterior walls, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, this is a little more complicated question, but I need some clarification on the location of the down drains on the northeast corner of the structure. So if you look at sheet nine of your plans and you look at the front elevation. And if you look just to the, just above the left-hand side of the gate, the driveway gate, you'll see there is a down drain and a leader header on that corner that is in front of the chimney.
Commissioner Dustin, can I interrupt right now for a clarification?
Certainly.
Does this somehow affect what, what our planner, Ms. Choi, said about wanting to minimize or eliminate downspouts?
It's, yes, it is related to it, yes.
All right, so you, you don't agree with her recommendation?
I do agree with her recommendation. I, I'm, yes.
So this is to clarify, it's consistent with her recommendation? I'm confused. Your question now to the applicant, is it, is it consistent with her recommendation about the downspouts?
Well, I think, I think his, his question is, there's a discrepancy between the two elevations. The front of it shows the leader head in front of the chimney and the side elevation on the east shows leader head behind the chimney.
Correct.
It's, it's a dropping error. I, I believe we, we did relocate it to the, to behind the chimney. So the east elevation location is correct.
Okay. And then last question, do you intend to grow plant material onto the wall lattice features on the front facade?
Yes.
Thank you, those are the only questions I have.
Commissioner, any other commissioners have questions? And if not, I do have one before we move on. It seems to me that, I was noticing that there seems to be inconsistency where, where the garage door is on some of the drawings on, hold on a second, I'm sorry, I have to look at my notes really quick that are online. In 1.1, it shows the garage door on the west side, but in drawing four, it shows the side door east-facing. So I need to have clarification on which one it is.
Okay, so on 1.1, the garage is on the west elevation. And on the floor plan, it's shown on different?
No, on drawing 4.0.
Oh, 4.0.
It shows.
On the model. Okay, so the model wasn't updated because the, the, you know, the person that we used to create our, our 3D models, he fell ill and he wasn't able to make those corrections before we had to submit. But the elevations are correct. The model, the, the location of the door on the model is incorrect. The elevations are correct. The model just wasn't updated in time before submission.
So the door will be on the west side of the building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I don't think there are any more questions from the commissioners to the applicant. So I now will ask if there are any comments for, against, or about the project from the public?
And Chair, I, yeah, I don't see any comments or ratings, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So now I will close the public comments and give the commissioners time to address this item. Why don't we start with Commissioner Okazaki?
You know, one of the points that I always notice, I look for is the number of people who review the plans in the neighborhood. And given that there was 14 people, that they circulated to, only four of the 14 approved, while there were no comments from 10 of the neighbors. And I'm glad that there's no objection because this is now a one-story building. I don't even remember if there was any, when it was a proposed two-story. But I think there might have been some. But personally, I think this is a great compromise or use of middle that shows a lot of restraint in terms of trying to maximize the buildable footprint of this property. And I totally respect that. And, and I think the, the plan is, is a great plan all around. I, I don't have any comments except to say thank you very much for submitting this revised plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, I have similar sentiments as Commissioner Okazaki. I think it's a good design. I did as well look at the neighboring legal properties and see who looked and approved. And it appears at least one adjacent neighbor did in fact give approval. I, I think overall, I agree with the staff's recommendations with the leader heads being overly, overuse of those. As well as the chimney caps, I think they're, they're a little bit much. But otherwise, I, I think I could support the project aside from those items.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin.
Sorry, unmuted. Yeah, before I comment on the house, I just wanted to call out and applaud the, the resource assessment report that was done for this proposal. You know, we get a lot of these reports every time they're doing a new house. And this one included a prehistoric context section that acknowledges that the current city of San Marino exists on territory occupied by indigenous peoples. And, you know, then people from Eurasia arrived. And I think it's important for that to be recognized and we don't see that regularly in those reports. And just taking that a step further, I noticed in this report, it uses the name Tongva and Gabriolino to refer to those indigenous peoples. And I am aware that some of the living descendants of those peoples dispute those names as being imposed by non-indigenous institutions. And the Keach Nation encourages consideration of the name Keach, K-I-Z-H, as an alternative. Just like it's important to acknowledge the original inhabitants, I think it's also important to acknowledge that the names used for those peoples is currently in dispute. So on to my design critique. I was very pleased with this design, like has been commented previously by my colleagues. The hurdle of massing and privacy were sufficiently dealt with. Those are usually the big problematic things for me and, and I don't have a problem with those in this project. I do, however, have a few design concerns. The applicant themselves in their application noted, and let me find my reference here. I can't find it, I'll speak from memory. But basically, they made the comment specifically that the, the purpose of their design was to respect traditional design elements and make it look like this brand-new house has been there forever. You see a lot of detailing and it is true that traditional quality architecture and design and construction has sufficient detailing. It is possible to sort of go overboard with that. I think this staff report sort of hinted on that a little bit. But one of the things that I noted is there's a lot of precast stonework on this house, on the window sills. Precast stonework is not a traditional detail that you would find on a Spanish colonial home built in the 20s and the 30s. So I, I think that's an error. Also, the eight-foot design, the eight-foot entry door, again, is just massively out of scale for the, the nature of this home, the neighborhood that it's in, and the comparable entryways that you see in the neighborhood. And it's just not in human scale. The residential design guide specifically discouraged that type of feature. The wall lattice work, I'm, I'm okay with now that I know that it's going to be covered with plant material. Again, that's not a traditional design element for this particular chosen style. But if it's going to be covered with plant material, I, I have no problem with it. Again, going back to the leader heads, I was asking about that one particular one on the corner because it is, you know, you've heard me speak before about leader heads on single-story homes. They're not appropriate. In this particular case, I might be convinced of it because the downspouts are all going to be enclosed in the wall and you might need access to clean out. But there's a problem in that northeast corner. If you move the leader head and the downspout behind the chimney, there is no way for that section of the roof to drain. There is, there is, there's just no down drain in that area. So the gutter is functionally useless and so that's not going to work. The other problem I have with the gutters and the leader heads is that they're proposing aluminum extruded gutters that are painted and then leader heads that are copper. Even if they're allowed to weather to a natural finish, they are not going to match the gutters. I think they need to be of the same material. The gutters either need to change to copper or the downspouts and leader heads need to change to aluminum and painted to match the gutters. The light fixtures, again, I'll also just echo staff's concern with the number of downspouts. I mean, I, in some places on this project, they're like every eight feet. That's just, there's just no reason for that. The light fixtures, if they're going to use the single-bulb fixtures that the model number corresponds to in the plans, I don't have a problem with those. But if they're going to use the multi-bulb fixtures, those are problematic. There's three 60-watt bulbs in there, that's 2,400 lumens per fixture. That, that will be problematic because there is very little shielding on those lenses. It's just lightly seated and it's clear. So I, I have concerns with that. And that's, that's my comments.
Thank you. And thank you for your comment with regards to the indigenous people of our area. I, I for one, very much appreciate that. Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with the comments of the other commissioners. I also agree with Commissioner Dustin about the entry door. I personally would go even a little bit further. I'm not a huge fan of turrets. I can see I'm in the minority there. I didn't see any in this neighborhood. I do know they're in our city. I don't like them. There's a few in my neighborhood. So if, if Commissioner Dustin says they're consistent with the Spanish colonial, I'll go along with it. It's just not my favorite. And, and also because it's a one-story, so it's not, you know, super tall. But I personally, like I said, that's not my favorite. But I do really appreciate the fact that this applicant took our concern seriously and I could not get over the change in this, the improvement. So thank you for that. I remember going last time and being just shocked by the flags and how massive it was. And now I went and was just very pleasantly surprised. So thank you for that. My only comment about any kind of modification would be condition number six, back to, back to the downspouts. To me, that's very vague, just to say minimize. And I think it should be more specific if we go with that to either say they should be reduced to no more than such-and-such or there shall be a maximum of such-and-such. Or if we don't want any, you know, then remove them all. Not saying we want that, but I think we need to be more specific so, so the applicant knows what we need. Other than that, I would only make another comment, which would be actually directed to Commissioner Dustin. I'm getting ahead of this chair as far as any kind of a group discussion. But would be just, do you think we could impose conditions based on what you're saying versus a continuance? And that goes my.
It will be tricky, but someone who's really good at wordsmithing, such as yourself, might be able to come up with a condition.
I was taking notes.
Was that it, Commissioner Wright?
Thank you.
Okay. So in general, I, yeah, where am I at this? I do appreciate the, this plan compared to what we've seen in the past. Some comments that I have, like Commissioner Wright, I agree with you. I'm not a real big fan of turrets. If, I did think that this seemed quite large and compared, it made the, it made this house seem very large in comparison to the neighbors. So, and I also, in terms of specific design, I also think that the very ornate bay window, for me, the bay window should be on the living room side and the French doors being on that front bedroom side. But that's just a personal preference. Let's see, in terms of the skylights, I believe that the design guidelines encourage placement of skylights in the least visible place from public view. And at least some of these skylights seem to violate that, so I'd like that to be looked at. The garage looked out of proportion from the alleyway and it was not compatible with the neighborhood. And it didn't seem like there was any room for planting. I agree that the chimneys were too tall and I don't think that the design elements were consistent with the style. I'm not sure if the work with the. I'm not sure if the work with the chimney caps will fix that, but it's just something that I noted. I want to say that I very much appreciate the fact that the, whomever it was has sourced recycled roof tiles. That I am always a proponent of reusing and recycling. The only other comment that I have here is that I just want to make sure, and sadly, it's just due to my inexperience, or my lack of knowledge, when we're talking about, you know, looking at traditional Spanish-style home, I believe that smooth stucco is not consistent with that. And I just, I see that in the description, it was considered skip trowel stucco, and I'm assuming that that is not the same as smooth stucco. And I just want to confirm that that is the case, because smooth stucco is, is not, it is a very contemporary feature on a Spanish-style home. So I don't know if anybody has, is skip trowel, does it mean that it has more texture to it, or is it still smooth? It, okay, thank you. So I don't, do we need to have any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Any other questions have come up between one another?
I have a comment based on what people have said.
Okay.
So Commissioner Wright expressed her dismay with the turret, as did Chair Boyle. I, I don't necessarily have a problem with the turret, but I, as you made your comments, I did realize that if the front entry door is reduced in height, as I think is required, it will be oddly proportioned. You're going to have a lot of extra space now between the top of the door entry and the top of the turret. So I would certainly be supportive of reducing the height of the turret, if that helps both of you and your concerns.
I mean, in theory, in theory, I would say it would help me. What I was thinking of when you were saying that is, I'll, I'll be honest, I was thinking, oh, does that mean, you know, do we, are we willing to approve this with those conditions and make sure that city staff sees all of that? Or is that one of those things that would then have to come back to us?
Jerry, what do you think?
I'm starting to think, and I'm so sorry applicant, who's done such a wonderful job, but I'm starting to think a continuance would be better. Just to the-
I, I would say that I'm leaning that way as well, just from the standpoint. And again, I mean, it, it's hard, because this project has come back to us so reimagined that I do support it, but if we are going to reduce the door height, and then therefore reducing the turret, plus some of the other changes, I personally would feel better if it came before our eyes one more time.
Me too.
I would agree with that. I, I think it's a little bit much to put that all in conditions.
Right, so does the applicant, I, I mean, I took a few notes, but, but Commissioner Dustin, you're going to have to help me. Definitely the entry door, which would mean the reduction of height in the turret, the, the stoneware, you wanted different, is that right, on the windows?
Oh, there's the precast stone? Yeah, I would prefer to see a heavy wood sill, but-
And they know about the downspouts and the leader heads and that northeast corner. You want aluminum, all aluminum or all copper? The skylights? Chair?
Yeah, I just, and maybe, maybe staff can help with that. Maybe they are in okay placement, but it just seemed to me that since they are encouraged to be away from visible, you know, view, I did have a couple of concerns, so maybe we could look into that.
And I'm not sure about the garage. I, I know when I went and viewed it, I, I was a little confused about the garage and came back and looked at the plan and thought I felt better by the fact that it's well within the height. But, and it's, I think, within code as far as setbacks. So is there something else you want, Chair?
Um, no, I mean, let me put it this way. If, if nobody else agrees with me, I just felt that it seemed, from looking at it from the alley, it seemed out of proportion with the neighborhood. But if nobody else felt that way, then that does not, you know, that could just be my, how I was viewing it. Maybe it's what kind of shoes I was wearing that day. So anyway, so if, yeah.
That's what I had, but Commissioner Dustin, did I miss something?
Just, I have just some concerns about the lighting. They, they needed to clarify what specific model they're using so that we can determine whether or not they are appropriate or too bright for the locations where they're proposing. The, the plans just don't specify enough.
Commissioner Chang and Commissioner Okazaki, I know you've been quiet while the three of us have been discussing. Do you, I guess I should say, is there any other discussion we should have, or do we want to make a motion?
I, I have no further comments beyond the ones I've made. I mean, it sounds like there's a continuance, so I, I would be in support of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to propose a motion. I propose that we continue DRC 21-28 HP until the October meeting. I'm assuming there's room on the agenda, is that-
And does the applicant have to waive their right to, what, I don't remember, I wanted to say speedy trial. Again, that's not it, but for-
For streamlining.
Yeah.
I know, they're, they're okay.
Okay, okay. Is there a second?
I second.
So I guess we can take, roll.
Commissioner Okazaki? You are muted. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. So I guess that's the agenda items, and now we shall move on to some resolutions, correct?
The artificial turf.
Yeah.
The what?
Artificial turf, turf discussion.
Oh, thanks. All right, staff, can we have a-
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the time this evening on this item. I know this, this is fairly fresh on the minds of the planning commission, we just discussed this last month. We wanted to take this opportunity of sharing the, our initial artificial turf standards to the commission early on prior to coming back before you with a formal ordinance that will eventually get to the city council. And so on page three of the staff report, you'll notice the, the artificial turf standards that we as staff find would be appropriate in, in terms for our city, as well as consistent to that of AB 1164. Page two of the report, actually page one and two of the report, provide a summarization of what's in the actual government code, as well as AB 1164. And we feel that these standards are, are standards that we feel are going to be appropriate for the city. For example, the pile of the artificial turf being an inch, over an inch, will provide that thickness. The variation in colors that we provide as a standard will also provide the appearance standards of, of natural turf. The one, item number one, I will suggest an alternative to item number one. And rather than being open-ended in this form, you have two options. You could certainly reference our existing code where it does identify maximum coverage in terms of impervious area, or the planning commission can very well just simply provide a percentage on the amount of artificial turf in the front yard, i.e. 50%, 45%, what have you, whatever you deem to be appropriate. And so those, those are alternatives to what I provided to the planning commission, but I'd like to put this on the floor for discussion, to provide some feedback and comments to staff, so that we may come back next month with a formal request for adoption of an ordinance by the planning commission. And again, eventually, this will lead to your city council ordinance and adoption. So I open the floor for discussion on this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright, do I have to call on?
Please, thank you. I just wanted you to, I had a question, Director, about your comment about number one. And I'm not sure I'm going to be able to articulate it, so you may have to help me. But what's the difference between, I mean, what would be the maximum percentage per our code? Because if we were going to put a number in, I would want to know the, the difference, the reference, if you will, what I'm, what I'm comparing it to. Do you understand my question?
Yes, so currently, the code does require that the front yards be covered in vegetative growth or plant material. If it's not either one of those, you can have, of course, the driveway and the walkways and any other impervious surface. The codes do limit the amount of impervious surfaces in the front yard to no more than 45%. So that basically means anything beyond that has to be live material. And so we can usually, we can use that standard for saying that that 55% must be a combination of live material or artificial turf, or we can do an allowance of that entire 55% of being artificial turf.
Hmm, 45%, right?
Well, 45% is the max for impervious surface.
The 55%? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is artificial turf considered an impervious surface?
It, it can be. It depends on the installation of the product. Some, the majority of the products that I have seen do provide for the water to percolate into the ground, into our natural groundwater. And so it's not, you know, others do solidify the underlayment where it prohibits water from seeping into the ground. Those would be no different than concrete, but the ones that I've seen, majority of them do a lot for water to seep into the ground.
So I'm, I'm not sure if I'm understanding the discussion so far, because that would be my concern, is that if you calculate your percentage based on impervious coverage, couldn't an applicant then just claim, well, the product I'm using is not impervious, so it's not subject to the percentage limitation?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a good point, and that's why I, I offer the alternative, which is doing away with, with the language in the draft and going solely with a flat-out percentage maximum of, of artificial turf in a front yard.
So you basically measure the area of the front yard, and it couldn't exceed a certain percentage that we would stipulate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say be mindful of the law where it, it does state that we cannot provide limitations that explicitly would prohibit the use of artificial turf, as well as become too costly for the applicant. So we need to be mindful of that.
I, I had a more broad question about the, the legislation that limits what we can do. And I'm still struggling with this, you know, in the, in the, what is it, the background section of the agenda report, under item B1, it says, it lists the three limitations that we have. And, and when I read that, I'm still not convinced that it is saying that you can't eliminate in, artificial turf as an option, so long as you provide other options, like drought-tolerant landscaping and xeriscaping, things like that. Because specifically, they include that third point, which talks about impeding the installation of drought-tolerant landscaping. So it seems to me like there might be some thought that you could say not artificial, but it could be drought-tolerant or low-water use. Am I just, I mean, have we asked for like an official review of that by city attorney, and whether that's just way off-base, or if it's a possibility?
Yeah, Steve, you want to answer that?
Sure. No, there's been no case law interpreting AB 1164 at this point, so there's still some questions about how this will play out in the future. And I imagine there will be challenges as cities across the state apply their own ordinances. I interpret it as preventing the city from prohibiting any of those three items, drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass, or artificial turf.
So all three options must be somehow available to some degree?
That's how I interpret it.
Okay.
It's interesting, just because, that's how you interpret it too, Jerry?
That's how I read it, yeah.
Okay, and the only reason why is because I guess it's just the difference of the use of and versus or. To me, you know, or indicates, kind of, you know, as long as you don't, as long as you allow one, you can disallow the others, or as long as you allow two, you can disallow one. But if that's, I, I don't know. I mean, if that's not the direction we're going.
If, if we, if we allow it on a controlled basis, and it looks like case law develops over the next 10, 15 years, that you could eliminate it as long as you provide other options, would, would that put us at any disadvantage to at some point later changing the ordinance?
You always make a revision to the ordinance, but you may have a tough time forcing someone to rip something out that they've already put in.
Oh, they'd have, I mean, we'd have to obviously grandfather existing installations, but, right.
That's, that's something that we would, we would have to look at. But yeah, I think that would be the challenge.
Okay.
I mean, so I guess if that, if, let's just start with the fact that we are going to put this ordinance in, because there's no interpretation of the law to not deny it, or, you know, remove, what, disallow it. To go back, I think that if it were, if it were solely up to me, I would like to put the limitation of, you know, 25% as opposed to doing it a calculation of the whole yard, limit it to a certain amount of percentage, as opposed, based on what Director Sabante said, that in theory, you could claim that the whole thing is impervious and put it everywhere. So I would rather there be natural landscaping and a limitation of the turf.
Yeah, and if I may, if I may, I think those are, that's, that's a great way of seeing this, because the front yards of a lot of our residencies are, they're, they're sort of a, a competition of a bunch of different elements. There's the driveway approach, the driveway, which could be between nine and 12 feet wide. You have walkways that vary in, in neandering or straight paths that are, you know, six feet wide. And then you have trees, and a lot of mature trees in the front yard. And if, if you look at one of the standards of prohibiting artificial turf onto the drip line of a tree, you know, at the very end, you could be ending up at 25% because you're avoiding the drip line, you're obviously avoiding the driveway, the walkways, and as well as in front of the house, you're requiring a three-foot landscape area. And so by virtue of all these elements, all these competing elements in the front yard, you could end up with only about 25% left over. So that, that could be a solid number.
But what, what about if they do all of that, and there's still area left? What, what are we going to expect them to do?
The expectation would be live vegetative growth or a plant material.
Encourage drought tolerant?
And of course, drought tolerant is another option we have. You know, obviously, as you know, a lot of our residents are doing drought tolerant landscaping, which is, you know, you know, low-water-use type landscaping, where the ground covering is a decomposed granite or some kind of a mulch or other type of ground cover.
I, I am by no means a proponent of artificial turf, and I have to say, I, I have to applaud the staff's creation of this proposed ordinance. I think it really is quite effective. I just am thinking of unintended consequences. Might we be encouraging people to not plant trees if they know that if they plant a tree, they can't put artificial turf anywhere underneath it? Or, or might we be encouraging people to force stunt growth, the trees that they have, and keep them small and tidy, as opposed to large and mature? Or is that not a concern?
It's a concern for me.
Me too.
Yeah, that's, that's an obvious concern. I didn't think about that. You, you know, certainly you could run into a condition where a, an existing property without trees in the front yard is, you know, it's, or, or let's just say a tree that doesn't meet the, the threshold that we currently have. You know, that tree is going to go away, and then you're going to have artificial turf to replace it. And, but, but, and I'm, I'm certain that there's a way under number two where we can rewrite that to prevent that from happening, because I do see that that's a, a certain threat. Yeah, the other thing I forgot to mention in my report was that this is just the first step of what we, what we're thinking to be our standards. I know that we talked about at the council level at least, or maybe here at this planning commission level, a, some kind of a pre-approved system, where over time, those that, those products that we feel meet our standards will end up on our pre-approval list. And as a pre-approval list, as you know, with roofing and windows, you can add a various number of conditions in addition to these standards that certainly help in the long run, in the long term. So this is just the first step in this process.
Director Servantes, it, can you tell me, like, um, once this, what would be the residence process if they want to put in artificial turf? Do they, would they have to come and get approval from city staff to do this?
Yeah, given that, that, you know, if these standards were in place now, it would automatically trigger, trigger a plan check process.
Okay.
Which requires the applicant to submit drawings that show us that artificial turf is outside the drip line, for example. That the pile height is one inch, one and a half inch height. You know, all these standards will have to be checked by virtue of the plan check process, which will of course include a, a fee, as well as an inspection of, of the, of the final product.
And then, I, I'm still thinking about like how to make sure that our trees are preserved, and that people, you know, are encouraged to plant trees. Like, you know, I want to say like, is there some sort of, I don't want to say incentive, but like tie it into our tree preservation ordinance somehow that, you know, or, you know, say like, the landscape plan must include the preservation of X amount of trees. I mean, I'm, I don't know if that's legal by any means, but I'm just saying, like, is there some kind of verbiage that we can?
Can we say something that has to do with, you know, if you plant artificial turf, you can't remove any trees? I mean, hey. Or, or some kind of, okay, maybe you can't remove any, but some kind of, of threshold? Because I think we could do that.
Or?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, like, I know that, I know that what I'm about to say is like slightly dangerous territory, but what, or even putting a new something in the tree preservation, tree ordinance preservation, that if one of the t- trees is damaged due to artificial turf, that there's a different fine scale?
I mean, that, that, that is certainly up to the council. I know that, I, I think I see one here tonight. And so that's a policy decision of the council, and so we can certainly go down that path. I would say that we have an ordinance that already deals with damaging of trees.
Right.
And so I think we're covered, and that's covered under a certain fine structure. But if we're looking at a higher fine structure as a result of artificial turf, you know, that, that's a policy decision. Uh, but, but we can certainly, you know, I'm hearing the comments with respect to trees, and we can go back and, and finesse item number two on this draft to see what we can do. We certainly don't want to create a conflict with our tree preservation ordinance. We also need to be mindful of, again, the conditions, limitations of the bill, which prevents us from having standards that would basically prevent the use of artificial turf, or make it infeasible. One of the things I was thinking on item two is that if you're going to install artificial turf, that you must, uh, uh, as a standard, install a tree of a specific size. And, and that's just kind of brainstorming right now, but certainly, you know, Steve and I will have to talk about that to make sure it doesn't impede on someone's abilities to install the product.
Yeah, and when you talk with the city attorney, I'm still concerned about item number two, where it says artificial turf shall not be permitted beneath the drip line of tree canopies. I'm concerned that that conflicts with state law, which says, well, something, oh, where it says a city may impose reasonable restrictions on the installation or design of artificial turf within the drip line. So you can, you can impose restrictions, but you can't prohibit. So I, you know, I'm not sure when you talk about plus two feet, whether you're doing that, but I think it's something that, you know, since, since you're going to be talking to your city attorney anyway, I think that's something that you had on to discuss as well. Does that, does number, is number two consistent with state law? And speaking of that, Dustin, I'm just throwing this out there. I'm going to be like our chair and be a little dangerous. But theoretically, I would say, our city council can take the position that you're taking on number two in the state law, because there is no case law that says otherwise. I mean, just because our city attorney and I read it a particular way, it doesn't mean we're right. And if our, if our council wants to, you know, go out there and take that, that bold position, you know, it's up to them. So there you go.
I like it, Commissioner, right?
We keep ourselves insured, you know, everybody sued us, but, you know, here it's a little different. But anyway, it's just, but, but there's no state law that prohibits it. So we, we could be the leading, the leading city in taking that position, right? I'm not saying we should be. I'm saying we could be. Okay, and then can I just make some, you know me, I have to make my little technical comments. Are we ready or not?
Yes.
Yes.
I think so.
And I know if you want, if there's any public comment, by the way, that I'm stepping on.
I haven't commented at all, listening to all of you. But I have several comments. Number one is, you know, I, 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 I hear the commissioners putting condition on, making it difficult for homeowners to use artificial turf. I realize that seems like none of us appreciate the product, and want to make sure that it, it doesn't take over our city. I, I personally don't think that people in San Marino are going to go hog wild and be installing this. So I, I would like to see us be more friendly to our residents and those who are interested, and I don't think there are too many. Let, make it easier for them to do it within the law. And, 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 and I see all these restrictions, eight through, not, all nine conditions. I, I like to make it as simple as possible to, to, to do what they want to do. Rather than, and, and, and if we find that it becomes a rampant and a problematic issue for our city, I think the city council could tighten the regulations, although, you know, and we could have the staff monitor it on an annual basis. But I really do not see a problem making it easy for people who think that they, you know, I mean, it's better to have artificial turf than dead grass and, and poorly maintain yards, I think.
But that, Commissioner Okazaki, I, I understand your, your position, but it's, it's not a choice between dead grass and artificial turf. It's, it's a choice between, I, I, I mean, I certainly don't think everybody in town should have a lush green lawn. I would love to get rid of mine. As soon as I can afford to have it torn out, I will. But I, I would go with natural landscaping that is drought tolerant and very low-water use. So I understand that some people may want the look of turf and don't want us to pay for the water. But I, I don't think it's, I think that's kind of an artificial choice to say that it's between dead grass and artificial turf.
Yeah, maybe that is not the correct comparison, because I think we do monitor our residents, and we don't have any area that I know of specifically with dead grass, because we, we are sending them a nuisance notice and to make sure that they take care of it. So we, we don't have that problem like, like the other jurisdictions made. So I appreciate that comment. But I still think that, though, you know, we, we, we should be friendlier in our legislation until we find that it's, uh, it becomes a problem for us. And I think we're making it, with all these conditions, making it almost impossible for somebody to be installing artificial turf, when the state law clearly wants us to allow that as a conservation measure, at least, you know, statewide.
Um, Commissioner Okazaki, I completely hear what you're saying, and I agree that we need to, you know, make certain things easier for residents. I think that the concern, at least my concern in particular, is just ensuring that, you know, I mean, I think we all value, I think we all value that our, you know, the homes, that we want to have a neighborhood with really beautiful landscaping to enhance our homes and our neighborhoods, and, and if my personal feeling is just that if we don't put some limitations, we run the risk of having a wall-to-wall, you know, green carpet-looking thing, as opposed to allow, saying something like, hey, this is fine, we just also want you to put some decorative hedges of drought-tolerant nature, and we want to make sure that our trees are preserved. I mean, that, that's kind of what, that's what I'm hearing, is more of like, we want to see this, we want to give you the latitude of doing what you want. It just, we also want to make sure that, you know, it comes with a landscape plan that enhances our entire community, and is not just a area of, you know,
Yeah, but making it easier, I think you were talking earlier about just saying no more than twenty-five percent of your front yardage, front yard be, uh, artificial turf. That kind of makes it easier for people to comprehend what they have to do. But when they got to go through nine different conditions, and, and it becomes more difficult. You know, it's just like the, the federal tax laws, it's very cumbersome. You, you need a, you need an, an engineer, a landscape architect, to go through the requirements, to, to figure out if you could do it that makes sense to you, you know. So I'm just saying, not, not everybody is as competent, and is as, is qualified, I guess, in figuring things out in these ordinances, and I, I find personally that many of them are too cumbersome. And so I'm just suggesting making it easier, make it more simplistic, K-I-S-S.
Well, the, the intention of, and so the intention that I had with this discussion is really just to let staff know whether these nine conditions are, are drafted properly or not. And so I'm just looking for direction on these standards. We're going to have a full-on dialogue at the next meeting about, you know, the actual ordinance, and at that point, we can talk about, of course, talk about the law and talk about, you know, opinions about limitations and not. So I'm, I'm looking for a direction as to whether the language is appropriate at this moment.
And my point was that keep the language to a minimal, make it as easy as possible for people to follow the law.
Hey, Commissioner, would you eliminate that it should be maintained in a clean and orderly condition? I mean, that seems reasonable, doesn't it?
Yeah, that does.
Eliminate it as a qualified?
That makes it simple.
Right, and should, would you eliminate, it should be installed by a qualified estate license contractor? I mean, we want that done.
No, I don't know if that's necessary.
Really?
Yeah.
No.
No, I think our experience tells us it is.
Yeah, I mean, especially because depending, until we have pre-approved product on, like, a pre-approved list, there's so many differences in artificial turf, and how the infill has to occur, how the infill, infill has to be built up, and what soil needs to be removed and replaced with to allow for proper drainage. And each artificial turf is completely different and has its own requirements, that it needs to be done by an expert in the field, and can't just be done haphazardly.
By a garden?
We've seen that.
With our tree?
Huh?
With our trees?
Yeah, so I think, you know, I mean, but that's why I think a lot of these are common sense. I think that they're common sense requirements to make sure that, like, that's what I'm saying. Like, we're giving the people the latitude to do this, but we're just saying it has to be done the proper way. It has to be done in a way that is maintained. It has to be done in a way that is per our city ordinances, that you have to be a permitted contractor within city limits to do work here. Like, now we're all of a sudden going to move it for, remove it for artificial turf? That, you know, that doesn't fly with me. That opens up a precedent that I can't stand behind at all. So.
I agree.
Um, so I think, so I would just say, I mean, we can go speak to, you know, I can call on every commissioner to just give a yea or nay, but I agree with the direction that you're going with some of the comments that we've brought up in terms of limiting the amount or doing something for tree preservation.
And, and the other comment I would make, and I do think this is very good, and, and I, I think it's easy to understand for the, and you're going to try to make it even easier to understand for the applicant, because I definitely agree with Commissioner Okazaki. We want to make things easy to understand for applicants. I just think this does. But as to number five, I, I am concerned that that's not, that we don't have a calculation for. Artificial turf shall only be permitted on sloped areas less than twenty-five percent. And how are we calculating that? So I'm just gonna make that comment.
My feedback would be that these conditions, I think, are very artfully written, and I think they are absolutely going in the right direction.
I'm supportive of the, uh, the conditions that, that have been proposed by staff. I think they're, I think they try to address the concerns, and more, you know, I think time and time again, you know, it's, if it's the homeowners' option to choose to have artificial turf installed, then it at least has to be done correctly, and has to be aesthetically pleasing, and with the materials and, and the substrate or so, the infill that's proper for drainage, that should, you know, Commissioner, Chair Boyle has raised time and time again. So I think that this qualifies all those concerns, and I think it's a, a, a good direction.
Okay, so we, we have our direction, and we'll come back, or someone will come back with the ordinance next month, and that'll be taken care of, I'm sure, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a general question for staff, if that may be permitted.
Sure.
Uh, in the, um, in the agenda report, it talked about how we're going to adjourn after this meeting to our next meeting, and it talks about executive order, blah, 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 allowing us to meet by Zoom. But my understanding is, does that executive order expires at the end of this month? Will, will we be, and I think the governor signed a new order on June 11th that said we can't meet further by Zoom. Am I misunderstanding that, or?
I saw that too, that it expires on October 1st. Stephen, do you, do you have any insight on, on that, the Brown Act adjustment?
No, I know there was some discussion of that among my colleagues this week. I need to go back and review that, so I can state accurately what the rule is. So if you could just give me a, a day or two, I can report to Aldo, and we can circulate that as, as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so now we move on to the resolutions? Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Staff, do you want to go over?
I would just, yeah, just ask the planning commission to provide comments or corrections, and we'll note them, or, and then we'll have a motion, yeah.
Yes. Agenda item number three, resolution PCR 21-17, I just have one little minor change, which is, the first, I think it's, I think I'm the right one. Yeah, the first whereas clause. Actually, it's the second whereas clause, whereas the property owner requests, with an S, a modification. You know, I like them perfect. And with that, I would move to approve.
Second.
Shall I have roll call?
Roll call.
Commissioner Okazaki?
Approve, yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to final item number four. Any comments for staff?
Move to approve, yeah, PCR 21-16.
Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Okazaki?
I approve.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Chair Boyle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And final item number six. Any comments for staff or motion?
Did we do five?
Wasn't that just five or did I highlight? Oh, I said, I said, I'm sorry. I was looking at five and said six. Item five, please.
Number five, there needs to be a period after section two A. I know, you know me, but I'm proving I read these things. And by the way, I was always taught, you don't have an A unless you have a B, but that's kind of neither. But there should be a period, which would be after the word public in section two A. And with that, I would move to approve.
And a second?
I second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Okazaki.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair Boyle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now final item number six.
And number six, uh, okay, I'm probably not even going to pronounce this correctly. Chair, you'll help me with the title. It's pitis forum.
Yes, you did it.
It's spelled, I think, correctly in the whereas clauses in section three, but not, it's spelled pitis forum in section two A. So just make those consistent. And then I move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Okazaki.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair Boyle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, well, normally I would, uh, move to close this, but I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge Director Cervantes. I believe unless my prayers have been answered and something has changed, you, this is your last planning commission meeting, correct?
It is, yes.
Um, I obviously want to give time to any commissioner that wants to say something to you personally. Um, in the last few years, you have become a friend and a confidant and a mentor. It has been fun since you worked with my mom in the past. And now I got to work with you. It has been a pleasure. I think that the city does not realize what they will be missing without your presence. And, um, I wish you so much luck. And, um, I'm just so grateful for everything and I'm just really going to miss you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you. And of course, uh, likewise, sorry, um, I'm going to miss you guys as well. It's been fun all these years. I've worked with so many planning commissioners, uh, DRC members, city council members. And it's been fun. It's been quite an experience, uh, in, in a positive way, really. Um, and meeting all of you and of course, making friendships, you know, long-lasting friendships in my mind. And so, um, the great thing here, if any, if there's any positives here is I'm, I'm just going down south. And I'll be close by. And of course, if, if you need me, I'll be there, um, for each and every one of you. If, and so, you know, I'm not going that far. And so that's the one benefit here is that. But it's been fun. It's been great. And I do appreciate a lot of your support over the years. I really do.
May I ask where south you're going to?
Uh, San Gabriel.
Oh, oh, that close.
Literally next.
Literally, literally a stone's throw.
Yeah.
Well, I, everything you said, Chair, and I would just also, um, add what I told our director earlier today, which is I have two, two of my three children live in San Gabriel, so he is not going to get away from us. And I also would like to invite all of the commissioners that I think it would be really great if we could take them out to lunch or do something like that. And if you guys are interested, I will try to organize something like that because as he said, he's not far. So I'm sure we can.
Does that violate the Brown Act? Do two of us have to go to time?
No, shall.
We won't talk shop.
Okay.
Then we wouldn't, but so.
I want to do it. I want to do it.
Yeah. Although I just want to say thank you. You've, you've been a tremendous resource to the city, but also to me personally. I, I count myself very fortunate that you were in the position you were when I started with DRC. I, I learned so much just by listening to you carefully and I, I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I would like to echo the same sentiment, although you've been great. I really appreciate everything you've done, uh, your service to the city. I spoke with, uh, Ra- Raymond Chang earlier today and, um, mentioned to him.
Your father.
That you'd be departing his one, you know, he spoke very fondly of you and your service and how he's worked with you, uh, I believe since you've started, um, with, with the city. And so, uh, you know, on behalf of him and myself, wanted to just thank you so much for everything you've done and where you've guided us to, uh, and just the continued, um, success of what, uh, San Marino looks like and feels like.
Thank you, Kevin. And I, and I'm going to, and of course, I'm going to see your, I'm going to see your dad down south. So, you know, we'll be right there.
This is true. You will. That's funny.
Yeah.
I, I, I did all everything everybody said and good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thank, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Well, with that, I guess I say meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.